Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first remind everyone that we have a number of events to help residents clean up their exterior properties during April and May. Including this upcoming Saturday, we'll have our hazardous household waste event at our DPW facility, and that will be from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And you can bring paint, dirt, wood, anything that normally might not be collected at the curbside with regular refuse, you can bring to the hazardous household waste day. And then also throughout April, we have a dumpster at DPW every Saturday where you can dump off shrubbery and woody debris and so on and so forth. So, look forward to that. You can visit our website for more information. We also have our Shine Day, which will take place on May 4th. That's where we have our Army Corps of, not Army Corps, our Corps of Volunteers go out and help clean up properties in the city where homeowners are just not able to do so for one reason or another. So if you know of anyone who would like to volunteer, please have them call us. We clean up about thirty homes on that Saturday. Likewise, if you know of any homes that you think may need attention, please let us know. You can email me, you can call me, or call 446-CITY, and we'll try to get that address on the list. Also, the Department of Public Works will discount its tree program in the month of May to encourage residents to purchase trees for the fall 2019 planting. A list of tree choices for planting in the public right-of-way will be available throughout May for $250 per tree, so there's a $50 discount if you participate in the program. Last year, we had fifty-six residents purchase trees. We really want to increase that number. We'd love to see more than a hundred residents participating in the program this year. So again, we encourage you to visit our website for more information and choose a tree to plant in the right-of-way. Our reforestation program is working well, but we need to continue to make progress. And along those same lines, we're participating with Green Macomb to hold a tree and plant sale in celebration of Arbor Day. And this event is coming up at Dodge Park on April 26th and the 27th, so you can plant or you can purchase species of trees, shrubs, and seeds, anywhere from $5 to $20. It's a great program, very affordable, and they're easy to plant. All the instructions come with the plants, and you just simply have to go to Dodge Park and pick it up. You have two days to go to the website and actually place your order online, which streamlines it. You can wait and go the day of, but it's a little more of a production. So you can go to green.mcomb.gov.org for more information on Green Macomb, the tree and plant sale. Again, that's April 26th and 27th. And Mayor, I wanted to take just a few minutes to introduce our Parks and Recreation Director to highlight some of the park improvements that are on the consent agenda this evening. As everyone knows, we're wrapping up the recreating recreation projects this year. We hope to have them substantially complete by year-end, so you're going to see one more really busy year of many park improvements. So Kyle Langlois is with us to highlight them.
Mr. Langlois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of Council, and all gathered here tonight. As city manager just alluded to, we are entering year three of our recreating recreation construction plan, and also, as you mentioned, we are bracing for a very, very busy year of park projects moving forward. I am scheduled to make a slightly more thorough presentation at the budget hearings in a few weeks, but certainly just want to give a few minutes of attention to the items on the consent agenda today. First is the agenda item for building improvements at Delia Nelson and Farmstead Parks. In total, five pavilion slash restroom facilities. We'll be getting a much-needed scope of renovations, including, but not limited to roof replacements, toilet and partition replacements, lighting upgrades that will enhance aesthetics and improve light output, entrance door replacement, and a number of other small items. Of those smaller items, happy to report that we're going to continue our plan to replace all paper towel dispensers in the parks with high-output hand dryers. This contributes to a more litter-free park system, as well as a vast reduction in trash filling our landfills, and the best part about it is it saves us a lot of money each year, too. As was highlighted in the agenda backup, we do anticipate this project to start very quickly if approved tonight, and we expect that it'll be completed in August of this year. Second agenda item is the renovation of Delia Park, which covers other items not included in the building improvements package. Improvements with this package include concrete and asphalt replacements outside of parking lots, the installation of lighting on the tennis courts, as well as in the parking lot off Ryan Road, and the reconfiguration of soccer fields, which will result in a reduction of full-size soccer fields in favor of multiple downsized fields to support the needs of our partnering organization, AYSO, as well as the installation of the city's first-ever dedicated cricket field. While that sounds very exciting in its own right, we are also even more excited about the long-awaited installation of the dog park, which will be located by the tennis courts off the Ryan Road entrance. This approximately two-acre fenced-in facility will have a dedicated off-leash area for the general dog population, as well as a separated area for the smaller dogs. While certain areas of this piece of the project will be completed in August as well, it is anticipated that the dog park will formally open in the latter stages of the fall once we can establish the grass. What is not included in the Delia Park agenda items today is the purchase of the tennis court lighting, which were approved and ordered in December of 2017 already, and site amenities like picnic tables, garbage cans, benches, et cetera, which were approved and purchased in October of 2018. Both of those items will be installed as we get closer to completion of the project at Delia Park. One remaining item that will be brought in front of you within the next few meetings is the purchase of a special vault-style restroom facility. This addition is planned for the dog park and tennis court section of the park off Ryan Road. Since we're going to have a lot more activity over there, we need some restroom facilities, and this will be a huge improvement to what we've had in the past, which are a series of portable toilets over by the tennis courts. As a follow-up on another point of interest, we are anxiously awaiting the official change in weather, and it looks like we've got it, and we will be putting a full-court press on the completion of the community center here to get that completed by the end of the year. Of course, the polar vortex and many bouts of irritating snow complicated progress this winter, but we are very optimistic that the progress in the next couple of months will prove to be beneficial. We just posted a new time-lapse video on the website, as hopefully most everybody saw, but I've also attached a couple of still photos of construction just for everybody's viewing pleasure this evening as well. It's amazing each good day that they have how much progress they're making on the work out there. In closing, I thank you for the opportunity to share some of this very brief information with you tonight. Look forward to giving a more comprehensive update and report on recreating recreation and the remaining projects in the next few weeks. Thank you.
And it's really nice to see everyone using the skate park. If you drive by tonight, you'll see it's really jam-packed with kids. Likewise, a soccer field across the street is jam-packed just about every night, not to mention the basketball courts across the street and the volleyball courts, so undoubtedly thousands of residents are enjoying these amenities every day. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, and this is to adopt a resolution designating April 2019 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We have a presentation from representatives of Turning Point who are here in the audience. Would you like to come on up?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. There we go. Good evening. I am a survivor of sexual assault. My name's Nancy. I live in Sterling Heights, and my sexual assault traumatized me, but through support, education, sharing my story, I am proud to say I am healing and I am strong. April is recognized across the nation as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Every ninety-eight seconds, someone in America experiences sexual assault. This crime is motivated by power and control, and has a lasting negative impact on survivors. Domestic and sexual violence are crimes that affect all of us. Last year, Turning Point provided services to 178 survivors who reside within the community of Sterling Heights. As community members, we can commit to being safe support for survivors by telling them, I'm sorry, by believing them. It is important that survivors know that the assault was not their fault, they are not alone, and that help is available. Survivors and their loved ones can get help through Turning Point's 24-hour crisis line, which can provide safety planning and referrals to programs such as free counseling and legal advocacy. We also offer forensic exams to sexual assault survivors, providing them with a highly-trained forensic nurse who collects evidence, and an advocate to provide emotional support. Last year, 375 people impacted by sexual assaults received exams. Turning Point is able to provide all these services for free, thanks to all the members of the community who volunteer and support us through donations, CD, BG funds, grants, and fundraisers. Last year, Turning Point completed 150 trainings to nearly 4,000 community members. Turning Point also provides a prevention education program for middle and high school students. Students are taught that abuse is never a survivor's fault, what consent is, how to identify coercion, and how to be a responsible upstander, not bystander. Last year, last school year, our prevention education presented 320 educational sessions to 5,039 students, school staff, and youth service providers in the county. As we continue to educate the community, we hope that more people will stand up against sexual violence. One way to stand up against sexual violence is to speak up when someone makes victim-blaming statements such as, "What were they wearing?", or "They had sex before." These statements continue to perpetuate rape culture in our community. Another way to create awareness is to wear a teal ribbon. Teal is a nationally-recognized color for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I have brought several teal ribbons with me. At this time, I would like to ask the Sterling Heights Council and community members to wear a teal ribbon for the month of October to raise awareness about the impact that sexual violence has on individuals, families, and communities, and to show survivors they are not alone. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that message that you shared with us, and we appreciate the ribbons that the clerk will pass out to us. So again, thank you very much for being here. Mr. Mayor. We have a suggested action, so do you want to make that? We'll do the suggested.
I'm not going to get caught doing that again. Okay, I will do the suggested, but I would like to make.
After you do the suggested.
After I can do, yes. It's a learning curve. Thank you.
We do things differently than up there in Louisiana.
Thank goodness you do. Resolved to adopt the resolution designating April 2019 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Sterling Heights, and encourage all residents to support programs that assist the victims of sexual assault in finding the help and healing they need.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say that Turning Point is an incredible resource for the citizens of Macomb County. I've had the opportunity to tour the facility and talk with some of the staff and some of the residents that are there, and it's very difficult situations, and they do an incredibly good job helping these folks through these very difficult situations. One of the things that wasn't mentioned was there is a resale shop called Secondhand Rose. If anybody has donations, donating clothing or anything like that to Secondhand Rose in downtown Mount Clemens, and they sell the donations to help raise money as well, so I just wanted to put that on the radar as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else, Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I want to thank you for sharing your story with us and being here today. It means a lot to hear about it because this is an insidious problem in the community, and I know several survivors myself, and I just think that we have to show our support. So thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. I have, Mr. Mayor.
Council, anyone else? Mayor Protam Sarowski.
And I do want to also thank you for coming. It is, I know many women who have been assaulted, some young men, or maybe now they might be older at this point, but to come out knowing you're going to even be on TV, it takes a lot of bravery, and it takes a lot of courage, and I know you're still on your journey to get to your full potential, but you're doing a wonderful job, and I wanted to thank you.
Anyone else, Council? I also want to echo those sentiments. Thank you very much for taking the time to be here and raising awareness to this very important issue. I've met privately with some individuals about what more we can do in the city of Sterling Heights to raise awareness, to provide resources if necessary, and possibly bring groups together. There are a number of different community groups that are on the front lines and see this. School administrators see it. Our police department sees it. Our fire department sees it. Is there a way that the city can facilitate a better understanding of the issue and a better resolution? Because ultimately, there's something going wrong in a man or a woman, because it doesn't just affect women, it affects children. It affects everybody, really, this terrible thing that's happening with domestic violence. And so, how do we get at the root cause of it? And so, having these types of presentations tonight, getting it on top of our mind, and making it something that we focus on, and we, as a city, should be part of that conversation, every bit as much as we should be about the opioid epidemic or about any public health issue. We want to be at the table, helping to resolve this. So we are committed to being a partner with anybody who would like to partner with us to make this terrible issue go away as much as we can. So thank you for your bravery and courage in being here. God bless you and all the work that you do. So Council, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, again. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction, and this is to introduce an ordinance amending Article 5 of Chapter 20 of the city code to conform local regulations for fireworks to the state of Michigan's Fireworks Safety Act as amended. We have a presentation from our Assistant City Attorney, Don Denault. Mr. Denault.
Counsel, this is probably one of the shorter presentations I'll give you, one of the shorter presentations I'll ever have to give you on an ordinance, because really all we're doing here is making some modifications to bring our ordinance in line with some changes the state legislature made in December of 2018. Just to bring everybody up to speed and refresh some memories, this has been an ongoing issue for cities like us over the last, I don't know, six, seven, eight years now, when the state started getting into allowing consumer fireworks, which I always describe as the kind that leave the ground, go up into the air, or the kind that make really, really loud noises. That's the best way I can describe consumer fireworks. The state got into that game during, I suppose, the recession time period, and allowed those to be used at certain times throughout the year, and stopped cities and villages and townships from regulating that. Over that time span, they've evolved it a little bit. They recognized in 2013, I believe, that we needed to have some authority to regulate some of it, and then this past year, they restricted it further. So the old rules before December were that there were about thirty days a year that people could blow up these fireworks without any regulation by local governments. What they've done now is tweaked that a bit to give people more time around the Fourth of July holiday to do it, but less time throughout the year. They took out some of the more unusual holidays like Columbus Day, when people really don't need to be able to use fireworks. So what they've done is they've given us a list of dates when we still can't stop things from happening, from blowing up, as it were, and that list is the following. From June 29th to July 4th, we can't do anything between 11:00 a.m. and 11:45 p.m. So they get about a twelve-and-a-half hour period of time people have on all of those days to blow up the ones that go up into the air or make loud noises. Also, on July 5th, they're allowed to do it if that date happens to fall on a Friday or Saturday that year. So every few years, we'll have a couple of July 5ths when it's also allowed to be done for that twelve-and-a-half hour period. Then they've also given people the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day, so you get the whole weekend, but you don't get the holiday. And then you get Labor Day weekend, the Saturday and Sunday, but you don't get the holiday. And then you get December 31st, of course, New Year's Eve, and that's the only one you can go longer. You can go until 1:00 in the morning, the night before January 1st, New Year's Day. So those are the new rules. We put those into the new ordinance for you. It's hopefully all redlined for you in front of you so you can see all the little other tweaks we made. There were some definitional things that were changed by the legislature. They changed some things about storage. They changed some things requiring sprinklers in retail locations that are in multi-tenant buildings. And one of the other things they did, I'll just point out, is they sort of made the penalties a little less severe, so you'll notice a few of the things that used to be misdemeanors are now civil infraction violations. Right or wrong, policy decision or otherwise, the police department won't have as much arrest power now, but they do still have the power to seize and forfeit any illegal fireworks, or those that are used illegally, and to issue tickets. The tickets, depending on the offense, can range anywhere from $150 all the way up to $1,000. So it just depends on what violation the police department might be enforcing. The only other unique thing, I always like to bring you one unique fact, the only one I have for you tonight, is that because the legislature enacted so much legislation in December, it still isn't all online yet, so if you try to go online and find these Senate and House bills that were adopted as public acts, they're so behind, they haven't caught up to these numbers yet. So it is public law, it is in effect, it is the law of the land in Michigan, but if a resident wants to go online and find the law of the land in Michigan, they won't find it yet unless they look into the actual public acts that were passed, not the codified laws, because the staff just can't keep up. There were so many. With that, I'm here if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Denault. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to introduce the ordinance amending Article 5 of Chapter 20 of the city code to conform local regulations for fireworks to the state of Michigan's Fireworks Safety Act as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I asked this to come before Council because as someone who frequently has to work around the holidays, the current regime of our fireworks system is broken, and being kept up to all hours of the night, to have veterans in my neighborhood approach me and say that these fireworks are contributing or exacerbating their PTSD, to have, just today, a woman who told me that her pets are so afraid of fireworks time, they hide under the bed, or they have to be tranquilized because their dogs are just so out of control, I think that tightening these rules brings much-needed relief to the community. I have one question for Mr. Denault through the mayor, though. I guess my one question is, why did they not make Memorial Day a holiday subject to this act? Do you think it's an oversight, or was it purposeful, or do you know anything about it?
Mr. Denault.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke, I don't. I've questioned that myself as I was writing this and just re-looking at it, thinking, am I missing something here? Yeah, you can't set them off on Memorial Day or Labor Day if a municipality stops you. Now, that being said, many communities don't have ordinances, and so you can light them off and set them off on any day of the year, but when it comes to being able to regulate, we have the authority to say no, and so that's what we've adopted, that's what we've put into the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Denault.
I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council, anyone else? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yanis.
I think, as most people know, I worked diligently in Lansing to try to completely repeal this law. I appreciate the remarks of Councilperson Radke in regards to pet owners and veterans. And I'm glad we're seeing some changes to the law, but the fact of the matter is, most of the fireworks went off over the Fourth of July weekend anyways, and now they've just made the timeline longer and more exacerbated for veterans, people with PTSD, pet owners. It just actually made the situation worse. So I would hope that anybody here tonight, or anybody watching, still feel open to complaining to us, to City Council, and to their state legislators, if this new law still has an impact on you and your neighborhood and your family. I can tell you, when I worked for the fire department, I worked the Fourth of July, we had a fire on July 5th, and as we turned down the street to the house that was on fire, you couldn't even see the pavement, it was so covered in paper of fireworks. And now this law actually is going to make Fourth of July worse for the city and its citizens. So I support the minimal changes, I support that we're adopting this, but the fact of the matter is, this is still a bad law for the state. It doesn't make our state any better, and I encourage people to still continue to complain for any impact that this law has on them and their family.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think anybody loves fireworks more than I do. I have not in my lifetime missed a Fourth of July ever, but I happen to agree with my council colleagues. I am just flabbergasted as to why we need that entire five days during the fourth week to have all of these fireworks. There is, I just don't understand. I wish that we could do more to, at least, we can't eliminate what the state is allowing, so we have to at least have an ordinance to be able to do something. But yes, please, residents, if this is something that also bothers you, please call your state rep, your state senator, go right to the top and talk to the mayor, or the, well, our mayor.
You got it.
The other mayor, the mayor of the state, the governor. So, sorry, Mayor, because we do need to, our voices are just counsel, your voices are the residents, and you make a huge impact, and we need your support to do something better with us, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. I, too, support the modifications, although I'm distressed by the possibility of seven days over Fourth of July. I happen to have a very large hunting dog who is extremely afraid of fireworks and puts herself in the bathtub, quite frankly, and she hates baths. afraid of fireworks and puts herself in the bathtub, quite frankly, and she hates baths. So, it's, to see what she goes through, I can only imagine what our vets are going through as well. And for the state to open it up for potentially seven days in a row, I think is absurd, although I do appreciate eliminating some of those holidays that probably were never an issue to begin with. So, they really didn't do much by eliminating them. So, as, you know, everyone up here has, you know, pleaded to our residents, just keep, you know, the lines of communications open with those state legislators, and let's see if we can get this modified even, even more. So, I have nothing further.
Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm going to agree with my colleagues, but we've been working on this for so long, since the last, this actually was adopted and went into law as far as on a state level. But I have to agree that extending it over Fourth of July isn't really going to help us much. It's only going to be a bigger problem. I am glad we're doing something. I know we have to make these changes because it's state law now, and it supersedes anything that we would do. But I have to tell you, I've been in fireworks-free communities for the Fourth of July, and they are still a celebration. So, I'm only saying it can, it is possible to celebrate the Fourth of July without fireworks. Nothing more.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Is it possible that we could send a letter to our legislatures and let them know how council feels about the, what is it, the five, six days during Fourth of July, that maybe they might reconsider and do something about that? Because I agree with everything that's been said here.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I couldn't agree more. We do need to call our state legislators and tell them not just to do something, they have to repeal the fireworks law, and at a minimum, the root cause is the sale of commercial-grade fireworks that is pretty much allowed statewide. Before the sale of fireworks was allowed statewide, it really wasn't an issue. You didn't have fireworks going off like they do now. And so, while we can, we can put an ordinance out there banning fireworks on those other days, we're almost powerless to stop it. You know, we've got something like 45,000 or 50,000 houses, and on many days, on nice summer days, you know, you might have hundreds of them shooting off fireworks at dusk, and there's just no way, with the number of police officers we have on the street, who have to actually enforce the traffic laws and are out there working, they're not just sitting around waiting for fireworks to go off. You know, it's, it's really, it's really unfortunate thing. And I, I can tell you why it happens. I know we say, well, I don't know why this happened, because I called State Representative Brand Iden, who is actually a friend of mine in college, who sits on, Henry, you might know, he sits, he's a chairman of some commission that was in charge of this. I don't even remember what it was. And he's from Kalamazoo. We had a good productive conversation. I was able to tell him our concerns, but at the end of the day, he doesn't share those concerns, because people in more rural areas, in the outstate counties, they don't see it as a concern. They can shoot off fireworks, and, you know, they don't realize the kind of suburban environment that we have here in southeast Michigan. So, this is just chalk it up. It's another one of the issues that southeast Michigan gets, gets short shrift on. And you have outstate legislators who seem to be more cohesive, for whatever reason. I don't know if it's because they're all Republican, and here you have a more, bigger mix of Republican and Democrat. But, you know, southeast Michigan is getting screwed here. I was just going to say it. And so, until, until we can all ban together here in southeast Michigan, so encourage your friends and neighbors that live in other communities, too, to get out there. And if you want these fireworks to stop, that's really the way it's going to have to happen, because we just can't enforce the laws that we have on the books to really have any meaningful impact because of the scope of the problem. So, glad we're doing this. I don't know if there's any way we can, we can really get it fixed at Lansing, but we sure need to try. So, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is an ordinance adoption. This is to consider adoption of an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 278 to incorporate Article 12A, creating the Lakeside Overlay District. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 278 to incorporate Article 12A, creating the Lakeside Overlay District.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I think it was explained very well, and we've certainly been working on it for almost a year.
I agree.
So, yes, I think we're good.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve.
Mayor Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there somebody on the consent agenda?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. If nobody wants to speak on any item on the consent agenda, Mrs. Kosky, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is consideration item. This is to consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and Local 1557 of the International Association of Firefighters for the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2022. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. The collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Local 1557 of International Association of Firefighters Union expired on June 30th, 2018, and since then, negotiations have ensued on the new CBA, and have resulted in the tentative agreement that is before you this evening. The membership of the union has ratified the new CBA and is now being presented to city council for approval. I'll highlight some of the key points of the new CBA as follows. First, the term is for four years, from July 2018 to June 30th, 2022. The wage increases are similar to previous collective bargaining agreements that have come before city council, including, most recently, the police officers' agreement. They include 2.5% wage increases of each, in each year of the agreement. As a recruitment tool, a newly hired firefighter paramedic is eligible to start at a higher wage step based upon his or her prior qualifying municipal fire department experience. This can help to eliminate a situation where an interested candidate, working for another qualified fire department, has to take a pay cut to join the Sterling Heights Fire Department, and this is becoming more and more common in fire departments, as the objective to hire qualified candidates becomes more challenging with the workforce being near full employment. The base medical coverage will be at the Blue Cross Blue Shield High Deductible Plan with Prescription Drug Benefit Plan and Annual Health Savings Account, contributions by the city of $2,400 for family, $1,200 for a single person. In addition, members will be responsible for any premium amounts over the state-established hard cap during the term of the agreement, which is $18,200 for the year of 2019. So, any amounts over that hard cap established by the state, members would be responsible for those costs. The High Deductible Plan as described will be the health plan taken into retirement for any member retiring during the term of the CBA. The city's annual contribution to the post-employment health plan, or PEP, accounts, accounts of members hired between July 1st, 2007, and July 2nd, 2013, will increase from $1,350 to $2,000. The annual contribution to the PEP accounts for members hired after January 2nd, 2013, which are those that have no medical, retiring medical coverage, increases from $1,350 to $3,000. The city will contribute $75 towards the purchase of a protective travel bag, which will safely store a firefighter's protective gear during transport and protect against carcinogens or other harmful substances that can be transferred to gear. And also, the annual uniform allowance and food allowance provided to eligible members will increase by $250 in each case. The longevity pay due eligible members after five years of service increases by 10% at each of the levels, which is consistent with what was done with other collective bargaining groups. There is a provision for a sixth captain dedicated to managing the various department-wide health and wellness programs, and active engagement in the review, design, implementation, and monitoring of all department safety practices. However, there would be no net increase in positions with this change. Eligibility for promotion to fire lieutenant will now require that the candidate has successfully completed a merit-based, if you will, blue card training and certification. This training hones the skillset of incident commanders and can lead to better outcomes. Promotion to the rank of captain will now require that the candidates pass a written examination to be eligible. All other monetary benefits remain at the levels provided under the expiring collective bargaining agreement. And I wanted to take just a couple of seconds to acknowledge the good work of our Assistant City Manager, Jeff Bahorsky, our HR Benefits Manager, Kate Baldwin, Fire Chief Chris Martin, who's in the audience tonight, and certainly, in addition, the union board, led by President John File, throughout the collective bargaining process that enabled the parties to reach this tentative agreement. So, really appreciate all of their good work. And with all of this in mind, I respectfully request the mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, oh, yes.
Hi. Just had a couple of clarifying questions here. I'm John Matthews, homeowner in Sterling Heights. My first question, Mr. Vanderpoel, I believe you were reading off the executive summary, memory serving, from the packet, as I saw it online. Who determines the eligibility of the new hires' time served, as mentioned in Section A of the executive summary, at least as it was uploaded online? My second question would be the Blue Cross Blue Shield Simply Blue 2000 High Deductible Plan. My understanding, the way it was written, is that it's the uniform plan for all employees. However, in the following sentence, which may be the way I read it, it wasn't a sentence to me. It looked more like a fragment, what does "in the event" relate to? Because the healthcare there seemed conditional on something, but I could not see what the condition was. My third question would be, what is the intended future use of Article 4 of the agreement? When I was looking through the changes to the collective bargaining agreement, I saw Article 4 reserved for future use. I'm not sure if that's standard in firefighter contracts. It's not from teacher contracts, and we go through a collective bargaining process. So, I was just somewhat curious about those couple of things. Those were the only questions I had. In general, I thought the contract looked fairly positive for the firefighters, and so, along with Mr. Vanderpoel, I'm seeming positive about it myself. So, these questions are not meant to pour cold water on it. I'm just curious about the conditions and the definitions within the contract. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sirovsky.
Resolve to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and Local 1557 of the International Association of Firefighters for the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2022, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sirovsky?
Not too much of a discussion, although I would like to, after all of our discussions, ask if Mr. Vanderpoel, in your final remarks, could address some of those questions of one of the residents. But just wanted to commend both our city manager, Assistant City Manager, certainly our fire chief. We have such an excellent department. We work very hard. We want to make sure that all of the firefighters are well taken care of, fairly compensated, and have the ability to have benefits after their service to our city. So, I'm happy with this. I'm glad to see that it is comprehensive, and I hope that it does cover as much as we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just, just a couple of comments. I, as well, would like to thank everyone involved in getting this contract done. It, as stated, expired in, on July 1st of 2018. Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Vanderpoel, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. So, because it expired July 1st, I'm assuming that it's all retro, back to July 1st of 2018.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. That's correct, Councilwoman Schmidt. It is retroactive. Police and fire have that protection, if you will, through state statute. Unfortunately, the other labor groups do not have that retroactivity protection.
Okay. Just, I just wanted that clarified, and I, if we could answer Mr. Matthews' questions later, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Vanderpoel, you want to take those on right now, if you could?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I believe the first question was, who determines prior service? That would be determined through the recruitment process. Every candidate would go through a background check. Certainly, they, they would offer that up, because they would want to get the higher pay. So, we would validate with the departments that they've highlighted, that in fact, they've, they have the service or train in their application. So, we would validate that through the application process. And it's interesting, you caught the one typo in the whole executive summary. In the event, I really should say in addition. So, that is merely a typo. So, thank you for, I was hoping that would fly under the radar screen. Your third question, actually, I think if you don't mind, I'd rather get with you after the city council meeting, just to get you to better explain that, and between the chief and I, we can respond to you. Thank you.
I, I think what he was referring to is in Article 4 of the, it's eliminated, the agency shop. So, it was eliminated, but rather than eliminate, you know, so there's, there's 30 or 40 articles, whatever. So, instead of eliminating the article and then moving it all up, we just keep that article in there and reserve it for future use. It maybe will never get used. But that, this way, you know, you always know that Article 5 in the collective bargaining agreement for the last 30 years has been union activities. You don't want to change those headings and numbers. So, that's, that's why, you know, the agency shop language was completely eliminated, but the, the Article 4 is staying there just as a placeholder, more or less. And if I'm wrong, but I see the chief back there shaking, nodding his head yes, so I think that's what it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Andrews.
The, the other thing is that many times, these contracts have cross-references to other articles, other section numbers and so forth, that, and if you, if you delete Article, Article 4, and, and don't look at the other sections very carefully, you can have a wrong cross-reference. So, it's just, many contract lawyers, of which I consider myself one, rather than, rather than check to make sure that all those other article cross-section, cross-reference are correct, you just reserve it, and then if you need it in the future, you, you got it there.
Which I'm sure you'd love nothing more than to sit in your office and check every single cross-reference, which I know you'd be very good at, Clark, but we appreciate that we don't have to pay for that time. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I, I want to commend the IAFF 1557-2, this wonderful agreement. I think it's, it's great that we got this done. I have one brief question through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. In Article 17, we eliminated Section 12, which was about secondary employment. Employees are banned from working a second job as a paid-on-call firefighter, et cetera. We eliminated that article, and I was wondering, what was the administration's thinking behind eliminating that, that specific article, or section, excuse me, Article 17, Section 12?
Mr. Vanderpoel, let me just get to that first, if you don't mind. What page?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's page 18.
293.
Yeah, 293 of the packet, yeah.
Or 292, maybe.
No, it's 293.
293.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor, and Councilman Radke first, and I'll certainly ask the chief to elaborate if need be. But the reality is, the firefighters, some of them do, knowing the work schedule, that they have a 24-hour shift, then they're off two days, they can very easily have secondary employment. That, that's pretty common with that sort of structure. So, that is in part the situation there. But certainly, the chief can elaborate if I've missed anything.
Chief Martin, if you would care to explain this, we'd be appreciative. Thank you. Thank you.
Given to Mayor Taylor, that language was removed because it used to be a requirement of the International Local, or International Association of Firefighters, and then it was deemed illegal, and they took it out of their bylaws. So, we took it out of our bylaws, because they couldn't really restrict what you can do on your off time. That's why it was removed from ours.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, thank you, chief, for that clarification, and thank you to everyone who worked on this, and to the firefighters, thank you for your service. Without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yes, miss, in the back?
Let me just pull up some notes. Okay. So, yesterday, there was something that went down on the internet. The mayor displayed an act that, to me, with the new Michigan cyberbullying, you walked a very fine line. This behavior sent many people who follow that page into, like a frenzy mode, to tear apart and attack this individual. It was not me. This individual asked about a topic, and the mayor went on her personal page, is what I'm assuming you did, and used information to incite a sense of mob mentality for people to attack her. He then encouraged people to keep attacking her. According to Sterling Heights Resolution for Ethical Principles for City Officials, it appears he violated numerous points. Now, I can either, I'm assuming you all know all of them. I can either go over them, I've highlighted them, or I can personally just email you them all later on. Would you like to hear them, or would you like me to just email them? Email them, or say them?
Whatever you want.
We don't have a, we can't go back. We're not going to engage in back and forth with you.
I will, go ahead, and I will.
So, you have three, four minutes to talk, and you can say what you'd like.
Okay. Okay. So, ensuring public respect and treating their office as a public trust, public servants should act so to ensure the reality and perception that government is conducted according to the highest principles of democracy, with honesty, integrity, and concern for justice, and is therefore worthy of respect, trust, and support. So, there are A and B points underneath ensuring public respect. That one was broken. Let me go to the last page, page eight. There's more in between there. Fitness for a public office. Public servants should conduct their professional and personal lives so as to reveal character, traits, attitudes, and judgments that are worthy of honor, respect, and demonstrate fitness for the public office. Points A, B, and C, honesty, integrity, and private personal conduct, all were broken severely. Name-calling was done on his part. I asked where the council stands on this issue. Do, I mean, do we believe many of you were also emailed about this issue from other people? What steps are going to be taken on this issue? While he did not cross that line, he sure did walk a fine line on it, and I think his actions were, I, there's no words, he incited a mob mentality yesterday. So, I guess that's where I stand. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Esther Hadad Race. I have lived in Sterling Heights for 52 years.
Can you pull the microphone over, just so we can hear you?
I have lived in Sterling Heights for 52 years. I just want to tell you, I love Sterling Heights. My children went to school here, and they are professional women, and I also worked in the schools district here. I try to keep my home beautiful. I'm a widow now, and I have run into a neighbor who insists on keeping his old truck in front of my house. I have been in contact, I think I talked to Barbara Zarco. If you remember, at a party, I mentioned about my neighbor leaving his truck in front of my house. He will not move it. I have called numerous times. DPW comes by, my house does not get cleared, his does. Now, how would you feel? This past winter, February 17th, my street was cleared, I got stuck in the snow. I called 911, I could not get out. He was gone, his truck is in front of my house. It took an hour before the police came out, it was 11 degrees that day. They said it was not a snow emergency. Officer Kuscheck came to my home, and he told me there was nothing they could do about it, because it is public parking. This man parks his car there 24/7 for three years now. He will move it occasionally, but he says it's his right. Officer Kuscheck couldn't even get out of my driveway, we had to get other neighbors to push me out, or him out, he had to get it out. Someone must have called him, he came the very next day, cleared his driveway, pulled his truck in, and left all the snow in front of my house. I feel this is very wrong, I think we need to amend or make a law that people cannot park their cars in front of your house on a regular basis. He's making my house his parking lot. He has a two-car attached garage, he has a driveway, he has a front of his house. They all take off from work, and this truck sits in front of my house daily, daily. I have been there 52 years. There are other codes, what do I want to say, violations that he has, I don't want to go into them. If anybody wants to know about him, I'll tell them. He's very wrong. And he's a prominent person, he works for the city, and I think he's just showing his power, like these women are saying manpower, to a woman who's 75 years old, a widow, and he has the power over me. And Mayor, I know your grandmother Shirley, she's a widow, she's in our widows' club, and I know darn well, if that truck was in front of her house three years, you'd be right there saying, this is not right. There's something wrong about this man, I'm telling you, this is not right. And that's all I have to say. And I love Sterling Heights, let's keep it Sterling.
Thank you. Can you give the clerk your address, so that we?
Several times.
Can you do it right now, so we have it?
Of course.
And we can see what we can do about it, okay?
Yes, well, this is my last resort, because I've called the city, I've called the police station, and they said they cannot do anything about it. So, what am I supposed to do? Sit there and look at this truck all day long, because this man has this power over me? I won't do it.
I understand. We'll see what we can do.
I appreciate this, everyone, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mr. Jefferson.
I wanted to get to something first, Mr. Vanderpoel. We have a pretty good program going on here at Sterling Heights. It's been going on for probably a good 20 to 25 years, I know more longer than 20 or 25, probably 25 to 30 years here we had at Sterling Heights. And that is the Single Parent Displaced Homemaker Program. There's a lot of people out here losing their jobs because of something they need to be A lot of people are looking to educate their children, they may not have the funding for I believe that program should be changed from the Single Parent Displaced Homemaker Program to the Low Income Educational Program. If people don't know, that program assists the single parents and displaced homemakers with funds to go to McComb Community College for two years, and it really helps those people who have taken advantage of that program. So, I believe that program really needs to be looked into and maybe changed by this city council, to see if we can come up with some other program. We also give money to Turning Point, maybe throw a little bit more of the funding toward Turning Point. That was that. Now, Mayor Taylor. Looks like the streets are starting to watch your behavior. Now, last year, and even the year before, Mayor Taylor, coming out of your mouth, it was told that we wasn't supposed to pay attention to things that happen on social media. And, you know what I'm talking about, you cursing at people, you came back and said, told us, you're not supposed to pay attention to stuff that happens on social media. When the rat did what he had to do, we're not supposed to pay attention to what happens on social media. When Lamborghini told Ms. Early what she was supposed to do, we're not supposed to pay attention to what happens on social media. When Lippy gets lippy, we're not supposed to pay what?
You're out of order. You can stop, you can call people by their name, you can't call people by derogatory comment names like Lippy or Rat. You make your point without violating our council rules. Go ahead.
Okay. I didn't violate the council rules, but, okay. So, you know who I'm talking about. Back to what I was saying, that we aren't supposed to be paying attention to what happened on social media. So, for the last two weeks here, that ring up in, up on Hall Road, so happened to get a derogatory name since it was put up. Now, remind you now, it was a person came up here way before that thing was put up, telling you guys that it was going to be derogatory names being called on that. Now, Mayor Taylor, we need you, and then, over the last two weeks, we had a vote to put another name onto that thing. But if we're not supposed to pay attention to stuff on social media, why are we wasting people's time? Why are you wasting people's time with this, with that renaming of that thing that was up on Hall Road? Matter of fact, does anybody ever see a halo on its side? A halo is supposed to be worn like a crown, because you are king or queen going into heaven, not on its side. So, I want you to tell us how you flip-flopped on that issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration, anything tonight, Mr. Vanderpoel?
No, Mayor, there is a reference regarding what I believe is a county program that we'd have to look into further. I don't believe that is a program run by the city. It could conceivably be partially funded through CDBG, but I'll certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Andrews, anything for tonight?
No, sir.
Counsel, any reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending the Michigan Municipal League's Capitol Conference this previous, almost two weeks ago now, I guess, after our, day after our last council meeting. And I graduated from Level 1 of the Elected Officials Academy of the MML, so I have my plaque here. I guess, in the city, both Mrs. Koski and I have now graduated from this program, but you have Level 3, I believe, so, kudos to you for all the hard work you've done. It required about, I think it was 24 credits worth of work, both on municipal finance and budgeting and ordinances and different things. So, I urge all my colleagues to attend the Michigan Municipal League trainings and learn more about how you can shape city government, and I just want to show it to the people that I'm working hard even when I'm not in the council chambers. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DeAnis.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so, city manager brought up Arbor Day and planting the trees, and April is the month of Earth Day. I forget how many Earth Days it is now, I remember the first one, I was in 7th grade. But I think, you know, this is an opportunity, combined with the Shine program that we have here, to really make our city cleaner and better. I've had the opportunity over the last month to walk many of our different neighborhoods, and I am surprised, I guess, somewhat appalled, maybe, by the amount of trash that we have in our ditches and along the side of the road. And I noticed, driving up the M-53 bypass between 19 Mile Road and Hall Road, the trash along the fence line is horrible. I was walking up Plum Brook from Shaner towards Dodge Park the other day, along the ITC corridor, trash all up along the fence line again, and in the ditches. So, the point of this is, you know, let's use Earth Day for what it's for, as a respect of the earth, but also respect of our community. And I encourage people to grab a trash bag and a rake, and maybe some of those pickup devices. I have a couple of projects that I'm going to be doing for Earth Day to help clean up my neighborhood, and I would encourage my fellow council members, but every member or citizen here in Sterling Heights, to take advantage of some of the things that are coming up, Arbor Day, Shine Day, and especially Earth Day. And you don't have to do anything organized, you can just do something in your own neighborhood to make our city look better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeAnis. Anyone else, counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I know that our Art Commission has been working for over two years on trying to work on a project where businesses could put murals on the side of their buildings with the approval of the city. So, I wondered how close we are to having something that we can sign, and I certainly want to thank our city attorney and the Art Commission for doing this, because, like I said, it's been a slow process over two years. So, how close are we to being, you know, coming to fruition?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, we're very close. In fact, all the promotional material has been completed and sent out. We're hoping we get some takers very soon. We expect that we will. It's obviously advantageous to businesses, because a mural on their highly visible wall certainly draws attention to the business, just like the gas station across the street here. Certainly, it's more recognized now than ever before because of the mural. So, we expect that businesses will take advantage of it. We've had a couple of inquiries, so we're very confident it's going to be successful. But we're just in the very early stages of promoting it. So, as soon as we get some viable takers, we'll proceed. It really costs the businesses, we, they lease us the wall space for a dollar a year, so it's not an expensive program, and if they have a wall that needs to be painted, it takes care of that as well, so it's advantageous for a number of reasons. But I'll let you, I'll let you and the city council know as soon as we get some takers.
You really appreciate the fact that, excuse me?
Will you yield for a question?
I have the floor.
Yes.
I have the floor.
That's why I'm asking you. Can she finish? I mean, you can ask, I'll give you the floor back, Mike.
I just want to thank the Art Commission for being patient with this, because it has taken a long time. And I know that when, I think Jeannie Shabath, at the time, was the chairperson, I think she still is, of the Art Commission, when she brought it to all of us, it was something we didn't know if it could ever happen, so I'm just glad that we were able to do something, and it's a great idea, and kudos to the Art Commission.
Anything else?
That's it.
I just had a brief question that I know a resident asked me, and I had forgotten. What happens after the five-year period on the murals? Will we repaint a new mural, or, I guess, a resident asked this question, I didn't have an answer for, so I just thought of this just now.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, that remains to be determined. We have to assess whether or not the business wants to continue, we have to assess the condition of the mural. There could be an interest from the city to, or the Arts Commission, to paint a new mural on that. So, we wanted some flexibility, so we thought a five-year period of time was pretty reasonable. Most murals will last that period of time, so that remains to be determined.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else, counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Just to remind all the residents that this Saturday, the DPW is conducting a hazardous waste collection, that would be your old paint cans, or pesticides, or any chemicals that can't go into your normal trash, can be dropped off at the DPW building on 18 Mile between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM. I know last Saturday, they had their shred day, and ended up going through, having cars there for two trucks full of shredded paper that is not going, you know, to the landfill and is safely destroyed. So, if you have any hazardous waste that you need to get rid of, this Saturday would be the time to go to the DPW. And that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Mrs. Koski.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. With this hazardous waste collection at DPW, do we have a list of the items that they will not take, and if they have to add, like kitty litter, or sand, or something to the paint cans before they take them to the DPW? Do we have that info? Do we have that information available to the residents? And if so, where?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Kosky, yes, we do. You can go to our website. The good news is, with paint, you do not have to put sand in it, you can actually bring paint cans that have the liquid paint in it, so that's the good news. Normally, without the hazardous waste program, you would have to put sand in the paint before you could dispose of it. So, this is a much better program in that respect. So, as Councilwoman Schmidt mentioned, in addition to the products she highlighted, empty propane tanks, for example, residents may have older tanks that they want to get rid of, you can bring those, pesticides, chemicals, paint, and the like, anything you can really think of that's in a liquid form that you normally would not be able to set out at your garbage, you can bring to the hazardous waste day.
What can you not bring?
I don't have that list in front of me, you can go to our website and look at it. I would have to pull it up.
On the website?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Anything else, Mrs. Kosky?
No, that's it.
Anything else? If not, just a reminder that a week from today, we'll be having our first budget hearing at 6:30 p.m., I believe. So, if you have any, I know there's been very few people that have had any complaints about how we've spent any of our money lately, but if you do have a complaint, or if you have a suggestion, or if you have any ideas, Tuesday, April 9th at 6:30 p.m. is the budget hearing, and we'd love to have you here and weighing in on the direction you want to see the city going. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.